Okay. Thank you. Item 8G, under New Business. Consideration of Counselor Kier's motion to censure counselor.
Yes, in this particular case, Counselor Kier made the motion to censure a sitting counselor, and I made the second. We did have some discussion, not much really, at that meeting. And at the conclusion of that meeting, both myself and Counselor Kier withdrew our second motions. It was presented during a time of the agenda when we were looking at future agenda topics, so it was way out of order. Regardless of what anyone thought, the order of it was slightly ajar. And it certainly, given the topic and the tenor and the tone, reflected the fact that it would need time, it would need discussion if it was to do anything at all. But I guess I'd like to ask our attorney to define for me what the word "censure" means and what are the obligations if we go ahead with a censure. What does that mean?
Censure is just a formal process in which the opinion of the council can be conveyed. It's just a formal process. Again, it's submitting the viewpoint and the opinion of the council on a particular issue, in this case regarding conduct of a counselor. It has no legal impact on a counselor's ability to discharge their duties. It doesn't cause any sort of legal issue for that counselor in terms of their ability to, again, discharge their duties or undertake the oath of office. Again, it's simply just conveying an opinion of the council.
Okay. I know for myself, I have expressed an apology to the person involved with that. I guess at this point in time, I do not plan to second the motion. I'm not sure of Counselor Kier's opinion or thoughts at this point. But we do have enough to be doing, and I think we just need to go forward from here. It's a public censure without any teeth, really just doesn't mean anything.
I would tend to disagree. The purpose of a censure is to state that you do not agree with a certain conduct that someone has done. And I think it is important that we, for me, maybe not all of us clearly, but I think it is important that we, as a council, want to stand for what we believe is right, which is just common decorum amongst ourselves, which I would still continue to think would be needed post my motion, but not just amongst ourselves, but with our citizens. Again, while each of us has individual rights, and I'm cautious to infringe on those, I think it is paramount to our success as a council to encourage in ourselves and the city through our actions and words, and I believe that we should hold ourselves and each other to a higher standard to meet those goals. Now, with that in mind, and knowing it's not a lot we can do, I do think it is important to do what is in our power so that we, if you, I feel about it, is if you do not stand against something that you don't agree with, then you're standing with it, and I refuse to do that. So I would like to make a motion to issue a public censure of Counselor Stone.
Is there a second?
I will second for discussion on this topic.
Okay, so Counselor Klosky seconded for purposes of discussion. Discussion? Yes, Counselor O'Hern.
Got a couple of questions. First question, I guess I will start with, is the censure violation of law or violation of parliamentary rules? Or what?
I'm going to address that to the legal counsel.
Well, okay.
It's actually neither. It's really just, again, it's just a formal opinion of the council. It's not a parliamentary violation, nor is it a violation of New Hampshire law or federal law.
Okay. So I'm going to ask a question, so it's a procedure of the council. So my question is, why are we keep violating Council Rule 12, where the city solicitor will only give opinions on law and will not give any opinion on any parliamentary rules? I don't know why we keep going to the attorney if it's not a violation of law.
Because I think there were lots of questions with regard to what we could or could not do. I mean, beyond censure, there have been lots of questions with regard to resigning. And that is not within our ability to do. But I think rather than talk about this from a lack of knowledge, it's helpful for us to seek the opinion of legal counsel in this matter.
Well, I'm just saying, it's a violation of our council rules, and we're spending money where we should be able to deal with this ourselves. So the next question is, you know, do we have censure in our council rules? I couldn't find it.
Correct.
In the absence of that, we go to Roberts' Rules of Order. So I read that. So I'm trying to understand what part of the Roberts' Rule of Censor we're pulling this from.
Well, that is part of the problem, and is why I had talked about the need to address this through policy. Because my concern is, whether I agree or disagree with the statements that Counselor Stone made on his Facebook account, I am hesitant to discipline anyone in any manner, shape, or form when that standard hasn't been clearly defined through policy. Because I know for a fact that other instances have occurred where you could say that what people have written on social media is less than the standard that we want to adhere to. And until we develop a code of conduct that includes behavior, both in an official and a nonofficial capacity, of counselors on social media, we're hard-pressed to decide who gets censored and who does not. Assistant Mayor Dameron.
Yeah, let me see if I can add any clarity, and it probably isn't possible for me to do so anyway. Our current code of conduct is a 2003 version. Certainly, that occurred a few years after we entered the 21st century. However, remarkably, it does not say anything about social media, period. And it's certainly my feeling, and I think perhaps the feeling of a number of counselors, that the mayor is right. But I would also add the words, not only do we need to bring it current, but we need to include ethical standards that counselors and/or public officials will abide by. I think we have an obligation to do that and to have a standard of a code of conduct that is an exemplar in the state that we can all adhere to.
And aspire to.
And aspire to. Thank you.
Any comments? Yes, Counselor Klosky.
So the issue I have with the overall blanket policy from the actions of one council I've heard other members of the community make reference to other people using social media. And I'm one that uses social media. I'm probably one of the most vocal people seated here that uses social media. I'm not going to ever apologize for defending the city or answering something of concern where we've already addressed it. So I want to be careful of that because I don't want hands tied where social media is a big part, good or bad, but where somebody asks, "Why did the council do that?" And to have the ability to not engage in that conversation with something that's already been rendered here, I don't think would be appropriate. I don't really want to see us just look at a broad brush to address an issue. You know, I will say that, however this turns out, I do publicly denounce what is doxing and is posting people's information. And an apology hasn't, that's up to the individual council. I don't feel an apology is coming forward, but I apologize for my fellow counselor's action. I don't condone that. I think censure is pointless, honestly. There's no teeth behind it, but that's all.
And I think some of your concerns can be addressed through a robust review of the code of conduct with the addition of a social media policy included. And in that discussion, there has to be a willingness, should the policy be passed, to adhere to it. And I think just the process of developing that policy and really talking about what are our expectations as a council with regard to our conduct, behavior, and then, once it's been clearly defined and people understand what it is, then we can move forward in the future with actions that don't comply. Counselor O'Hern.
I'm the opposite, I guess, of Counselor Klosky. I don't post things very often, very rarely. And so, to this day, I still don't know what we're talking about, what was said on Facebook. I mean, I've heard from people, but I haven't seen it. And I'm, you know, everybody knows what I used to do, so I'm a person, I like to see what people are talking about, and then I make my decision from that. So I was under the impression probably that if Counselor Kier was going to make a motion, that she was going to show us some stuff so I could make my decision from that.
Did you hear that, Counselor Kier?
So it cuts a little bit out, but are you asking for me to show something to prove where I'm coming from?
I think that's what Counselor O'Hern said.
Sure, I mean, I sent an email, hold on, let me check. I sent an email to Charlestown on December 31st at 10:43 a.m. with screenshots. I'd be happy to forward that to you as well. I wasn't aware that you hadn't kind of already received that information, so that was my bad for concluding that.
So I guess with that, I, you know, I can't look at it tonight. So I don't know where we're going to go.
So where is the council on the?
Well, I would also want to put out there that we've been talking about this since at least December 31st. So I'm a little frustrated that we've been talking about it this long, we're living on legal counsel, and just tonight now is it coming forward that you haven't seen this? If I had known that, we've been talking about it this long, I assumed everybody had seen it. There would, you know, I would have been happy to have provided this information. I don't want to keep going on with this.
Comments from the council? We have a motion on the table. People in the public, I believe, want to speak to this. Is that the will of the council?
Yes.
Before we go there, Counselor Pope?
I've seen bits and pieces of it. You know, we don't have a good social media policy. Honestly, I would probably not ever think of doxing a person, nor would I think of telling a state rep to blank himself or speak badly of a citizen in our community, all these things which brought to my attention. That's just me. I mean, I apologize to you guys for the pain and suffering you have, but, I mean, what I've seen is also secondhand. Just my opinion. As for a censure, I'd have to have a lot more evidence. I mean, I know Chief Chase is here. I know that Mr. Stone wanted him here. I know that Mr. Stone had some things to defend himself with. I believe there were some contacts with the police department regarding. And I think before we go too much further on here, I think we need to have Mr. Stone's comments on this.
Well, I believe it's probably been about, what, three, four meetings now where people have come in and said that I've threatened people on Facebook? And that's why I wanted Mr. Chase here tonight in his official capacity as Chief of Police to say if there is, in fact, any criminal investigations that were launched, or if they were concluded, and if there were any criminal charges that were found or sustained.
Would you like Chief Chase?
We at Clamott Police Department receive a number of complaints every day, and a number of complaints come in, not related to the council, but we take the initial information, determine whether there's an alleged crime or if there's a problem that we need to either mediate or investigate. So I give you that preface first with the fact that complaints have been made on this particular issue. We have not found any crime that's been reported. We have a standing order with the Attorney General's Office. If there's a crime that's alleged against someone that's in municipal government or local government, we have a system that we have to follow. We have to report it to the county attorney, just like if there's a crime alleged against a state representative or a state employee, we have to report directly to the Attorney General's Office. So I give you all that with the fact that complaints have been made about this. We receive Facebook harassments, Facebook issues all the time. Two of the members that used to work at Clamott Police Department have received those complaints. They're very, very difficult to investigate or prove that there's a crime that had occurred. So a lot of times, we'll take that information, document it, and close it out because we, innuendo and Facebook harassment is a very difficult issue, and as far as enforcing it as a crime, very difficult. But it's a common call we get at Clamott Police Department. It's a common call in Newport, Lebanon, all over New Hampshire. It's not an epidemic, it's just people see they're offended, they're attacked online because of different issues. And we take those complaints. If there's a crime that's alleged or we can prove, we'll follow that system. The particular issue that we're talking about, those people have come in, talked to the Clamott Police Department, talked to me. So to answer the most direct question to that, there is no investigation that's going on as a criminal investigation. But again, when they come into Clamott Police Department, we take the information and do an initial or determine if there's a crime. We at the police department understand when people come in and they're offended and they have this, it's very frustrating. We see people very emotional because of what's happening on social media. I hate to say always Facebook, because it's not always Facebook. We're dealing with this at the grade school, middle school, and high school level, and the adult world. So we're seeing this all the time, but to answer the most direct question, there is no open investigation. If there was, I would follow the Attorney General's marching orders or their directive on how I would report it, and those people would be notified, and we would follow it. So that's where we are, and I assume that's why you wanted me here, to state that, that there's no open criminal investigation. However, I also believe if it was a criminal investigation, we wouldn't be speaking openly quite like this. It would be a criminal investigation, and we wouldn't be able to even discuss it until it's truly investigated. And if it was determined to be a crime, it would go forward on that. If it was unfounded, then I could talk about it. Or if we didn't have enough information, we had to suspend the investigation, and we wouldn't be able to talk about it until at least the statute of limitations were over. So that's my comment on this particular matter.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief? Counselor O'Hern?
Just one question. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to go from, before I retire, but doesn't Facebook have avenues where you can lodge a complaint to them, and they will investigate and determine whether or not to shut down somebody's Facebook or suspend it and stuff?
They can. So that's a, when we get the Facebook or the social media complaint, the Twitter complaint or whatever, we encourage them to report it directly to that marketing source, Facebook, Twitter, or whatever. But there's no obligation for them to do that. We can't make them. And we have seen them shut down accounts. We've later found out that, you know, because of this particular, not this particular issue you're talking about today, but things that have happened on social media and what people have done, they have shut down accounts. We encourage them to report it to, we'll commonly call it the Facebook police, because that is the most common form of social media we deal with. But it's not like a joint effort between Clamott Police Department and someone working in Silicon Valley on this issue. We encourage them to do that because it is a medium for people to have their speech heard, whether we like it or not, and that's the difficult part. And I feel for members of the audience that have been slighted by things that are said, but there are people that are watching. There are other people that are watching that I'm sure have seen the same kind of issue where they've been offended on Facebook or someone said something about them, and we haven't been able to investigate or charge that person.
Anything from the council for Chief Chase? Counselor Pope?
Still trying to reconcile a few things here. You know, in my training through Primex and such as a teacher, we have to know about the harassment laws, 644, I think it's dash four. I have to be out on the lookout for that. We have to be reporters in the school situation, and even if we know someone's got this going on socially, if it involves children and such, which is a question I'd asked earlier, which it did not. I know in my training through New Hampshire Municipal Association, there were a lot of different things about an RSA, I think it was 633. Have to look it up, about use of power, using power in the wrong ways. Were those ever looked at?
I can't.
I have to go through the Primex training every year. It's been nine years straight I've had to go through this.
I can't say, without, I'm not sure what RSA you're speaking on. The harassment issue, that particular RSA used to be very popular with phone harassment. People would call people, and we'd use phone harassment under that RSA. The harassment on social media is a little more difficult to prove, and whether it's there, it's incredibly difficult, you know? Who's really sending it? Who's saying it? But the abuse of power, I don't, no.
I ask that because that's been the training I've given, and the training I get hammered with every year, just went through, in fact, two weeks ago, so I'm asking the question.
Anything else for Chief Chase? Thank you, Chief Chase.
Thank you, Chief.
Counselor Zula, did you want to say anything? I thought I saw your hand go up.
No, I'm good now.
You're good? Okay. So we have a motion? Oh, how was the council? Wait a minute. Does the council want to have members of the public speak to this?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Kier, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that my motion is not based on any worry of legality. Whether technically legal to do or not is not really my concern. My concern is what our values and morals are as a council and what we should be standing for, which is treating each other with respect, whether we agree with someone or not.
Correct.
So I just wanted to clarify some of that.
Thank you. So we're going, you can't see us, so we're going to have people from the public comment on this. Okay? Who would like to speak?
That's it.
I think I saw your hand first, Mr. Goethe.
Francis Goethe, Ward 1. I just want to say that I think, I would say no on this censure. If you were to vote on, when you vote for this in a few minutes, my recommendation is no. As state representative, I've been threatened by the public, by other reps from the other side of the party, so on and so forth. Okay? When you make yourself public, even if you're not an elected person, when you choose to make yourself public, you're going to be opened up to all sorts of things. And Andy O'Hern said that there's all sorts of opportunities to block, to report, and to get rid of that. Right? There was a hate page against me. Me and others who work with me, we had that hate page taken down. There was no facts there. It was only personal filth. So what I would say, vote no on this censure. And if there's all sorts of evidence out there, that should be made public also. And I believe that's opened up to 91a right to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Patrick Adrian, Ward 1. I would agree with no to the censure for the fact that I really think that a lot of this needs to be more in the voters' hands, I think, than the council. And, you know, I'm one, I didn't condone what Counselor Stone did. At the time, I felt, at the very least, I felt there should be an apology. I also, listening to arguments that were made, like Trish Clay and some others had made, I thought they made a very good case why a counselor should resign. I've seen school board members resign for much less on that they made, you know, I knew a school board member in Cornish that stepped down for comments they made on Facebook about the public. That said, you know, I also respect the fact that Counselor Stone chose not to apologize or chose not to resign. That's his choice. I think at this point, you know, it should be up to voters to decide what's important to them. I worry about the council doing this. I really worry about the council trying to get into updating the policy for social media. I think reading that article, that editorial from the union leader, made a really strong case for me. And I think the fact that there has been a lawsuit in the past against the city over a similar First Amendment thing, I really think, to me, you know, whether, what you say in public, it doesn't matter whether it's social media or not, I think it's kind of, I think the current policy, I don't think you need to have a specific social media policy. I would recommend not doing that. I think that you're going to get into some serious First Amendment rights violations by playing around with that. But I think at this point, I would say let the public kind of decide what's important to them.
Anybody else from the public? Let me go on this side first. No. Excuse me, excuse me, he's going to speak first.
My name is Steve Lasko, Ward 3, and what I have to say isn't going to make you guys happy, but you all said, we just sat here and went through the whole scenario about what this censure means, and it means nothing. Your lawyer just told you, it's nothing. Why are we even talking about it? There's no teeth in it. Yet, this stayed in the media, nobody bothered to call and say, hey, we don't have an issue here because we don't have any, we don't have any way to correct this or to do anything about it. So we let this drama build and build and build and build. So some of us are here for this, and there's nothing. You guys could have got together three weeks ago by yourselves and said, you know what? We got nothing here, and wiped it off the board. Or you could have made a rule and said, from now on, this is what we're doing. That's your job, not to come here and say, well, we don't know what the hell we're doing. I'm sorry. But I just, whether something is said in the public realm on Facebook or out loud is a different story than coming here and doing your jobs. Don't let what our government officials are doing and their childish infighting take over the group, because you don't have too many people here to lose. So I'm just saying, think about what you're doing and the way the public perceives what, you're going to have a hard time explaining that this means nothing after everybody's been waiting for this to turn out and see what this drama is, and there's no drama. So. Ward 3, I'm back. You know, I've listened to this, I don't know, Mr. Stone, which word are you out of by the?
Three.
Three?
Three.
Three? Okay. Anyway, I don't know anything about this problem, but if you've wasted two months on this thing, you have done no city business. And what you've done tonight is a waste of time. You've got Channel Five standing over there and you're creating an image that sucks. No wonder nobody wants to move to Claremont or hear the word Claremont. You people put out an image that's ridiculous. You can't handle a little problem like he had and social media is going to be here forever. It was created by an idiot and all it is is a tabloid now on a computer. So, either you get tougher skin, because some of you got thin skin, and move on. There's more important things to do in this town than what's being done here. All you're doing is burning up time over something that nobody cares about. The constituents for the ward that he's in will decide whether he stays or goes in the future. And that's the end of it.
So, Assistant Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
Trish Clay, Ward three. Um, I'm, again, I actually, I actually didn't prepare anything, so forgive me. I think it's really easy for everybody to say that this was just drama, that it wasn't a big deal, but you haven't lived my life the last two years. This is, uh, two years, two months. This is something I didn't even make a public anything about. I literally work full-time providing mental health services to this community and I work and I'm going to school and I'm trying to get everything done. And I'm sitting here minding my own business, working my butt off. And I'm getting messages all of a sudden about my genitalia, about the penis apparently I have. News to me. Um, and I'm being threatened and Mr. Stone's friend is threatening us with a switchblade and he's allowing this and keeping this up for multiple days. And again, I have everything. So, I'm more than happy to show you guys for anybody that thinks it doesn't exist. Um, and them not doing their job, a big part of their job is to represent us. And that includes everybody, which means they need to take this seriously. I don't feel safe anymore. It has felt better because I have a lot of support. Um, so that's been better, but it's just, it's come up at my work, because he shared where I work. It's come up in every part of my life at this point. So, it's really easy for any of you to say, it's just drama, it's not a big deal, but I really just would like you to think how it is to be me. I didn't write anything and I was attacked. Nothing. And I also want to take this time to let you speak. Why did you come to my page? My page? Somebody who actually wasn't involved in this? That is my husband. He's not my keeper. I have my own opinions. So, why did you come to my page, share where I work, come to my page and take my pictures? Thank you. So, go ahead.
I guess for the same reason you took stuff off my page.
I didn't take anything off your page.
Really?
I took what you wrote about me off of your page.
All right. I guess I have nothing else.
Um, I think one other person took the, some memes you had, but I only took literally what you wrote about me. That is literally it and I can show you that.
I have an important question.
Yes, Counselor Stone?
Did you receive any direct threats from me?
No. And I never said I did. But to me, a threat is, you literally supported the threats on your page for days and didn't take it down.
So-
If it was me-
You didn't like some of them?
Yeah. If it was me and I had some people supporting me and they got to the point that your friends did, I would have been like, that's not okay. Thank you for supporting me. I'm taking this down. We're not going to go there, because we're adults. You didn't do that. And the only thing I took from your page, because, trust me, I have a lot better things to do than go to your page in my free time that I don't have. Okay? Except the one thing you said about me. So, why did you go to my, and that was only because people let me know?
Okay.
I haven't got any answers. Nobody has said, besides, you have apologized to me profusely and you have said, and I also thank you for your last email. The reason I kept interrupting my husband two weeks ago was because our dog was dying, but he had to be here to talk about this while I had to put our dog down.
Ms., we are trying, we have a motion on the floor. I think you have clearly articulated how this has impacted you. And I think you've heard from members of the council that this is not the type of behavior where you're condoning.
Of course.
The motion, the motion on the table is, well, it's not on the table, the motion on the floor is, do we move forward censoring? Or do we take a different approach to really, as a council, you know, talk about what our code of conduct and ethics should be?
Well, I think it's obvious that you need to move forward with that. But I also think I deserve an explanation, because I actually haven't gone to his Facebook page until I found out about this, that my wedding pictures were being shared. And I was getting messages about my genitalia.
Mr. Tangi, how do we move forward with this?
Well, at this point, Madam Mayor, you have a motion. At this point, if the public comment has ended, the council can take a vote.
Uh, we have at least one other.
And I just saw a hand go up.
I think Mr. Clay was next.
Okay.
Sam Clay, Ward three. So, first of all, I'd like to say that I don't actually care whether a censure has teeth or not. I would like each of you to go on the record. I would appreciate that. As Ms. Keir says, this is not, maybe not a legal issue, but it's a moral issue. And I don't, we see, when you talk about writing a new standard to add to the code of conduct, I think you have a perfectly good code of conduct and I'm going to read something from it in a minute. And if you can't find a way to enforce that, then why create more paperwork? It, it makes no sense to me. So, from the violations section of the code of conduct, and I'm sorry, this is on my phone, I should have printed it out. It's very small. Oh, I would also like to say, at least two of you have said tonight that you haven't even seen these pictures. I'm, this has been two months, it's in the news, it's been here. That's a touch disappointing. But if you want to see those pictures, Mr. O'Hern, for example, I have them all on my phone, my wife has dozens. Oh, and I'm not going to be guilty for taking screenshots of your page when your friends are talking about, doing something to me with a machete. Thank you. So, from the violations section of the code of conduct. Violations of this policy undermine the confidence that the general public has in the city government. The city must operate effectively and efficiently so that we will encourage individuals and businesses to become or remain a part of the community. Accordingly, all city employees and board members must avoid circumstances that damage public confidence. Violations of this policy that occur under circumstances where the city employee or board member knew or should have known that the conduct in question violated this code of conduct must have strong consequences. And then it goes on to list a small menu of options for you in the consequences category, censure being the least of those. And if you cannot even muster that much for me when clearly the counselor was out of line, then that's not saying a whole lot for us. Thank you.
Mr. Osgood? Oh, Counselor Stone?
Mr. Clay, did you attend a council meeting on December 12th, 2018?
Yes, I did.
Did you talk to us about your feelings towards the park decorations that we have for the Christmas display?
Yes, I made a request in the meeting, Counsel.
Do you feel that you did that respectfully?
I was respectfully.
And I would agree with you on that.
Can we just ask that the answer is, we got the podium, there's people at home, I'm, I'm sorry.
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 This is guilty.
So, yes, City Council on the 12th.
You were respectful.
I made a request and I attempted to be as respectful as I could.
And you were-
Given that I understand it's a very sensitive topic for people.
And you were respectful. Did you give an interview on 12/16 or 12/15, 2018, to the union leader?
I did speak to the union leader.
Now, you talked here a lot about being offended. The leader published the article, Claremont Atheist Threatens Satanic Display of City Nativity Menorah Not Removed. Does that sound like a threat?
Um, it was an unfortunate title.
Sounds like a threat.
I wasn't consulted on the title. Actually, that was one of the few things that I disagreed with in that article. I had suggested that, that reporter had asked me what next steps down the line after my request on the 12th might, might be. And so, I threw out a couple of scenarios. Yeah.
Good.
But I would not have characterized it as a threat and I was pretty disappointed that it was characterized as a threat.
If the city does not remove a nativity scene and menorah displays each year at Broad Street Park, an atheist is threatening to erect an anti-Christian display of his own?
Again, I did not see it as a threat and I would not characterize it as this threat, as a threat.
Is this an accurate quote?
Anymore, so then I interpret your nativity as a threat to me.
It's going to piss a lot of people off, said Clay in 36.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay. Mr. Tangi, I'm not even sure this is appropriate. I mean, this is-
I just got one more thing.
No. Can I just get a legal opinion on this?
Well, I think, I think at this point, we're not, we're not in a hearing situation in the sense where we're asking questions of, of the members, of the public. Uh, I think what, I think at this point, we're right now, we're at public comment as, as part of the motion. So, and if we're going to bring it back to the council, I would ask the council if they have a position to state, they can certainly state it, but we're certainly not conducting a hearing of the, of the public at this point.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Clay, did you want to say anything else?
I'll say.
Mr. Osgood?
Joe Osgood, Ward one. Um, it's been mentioned tonight that it's not in the council rules, anything mentioned about censure. And Counselor O'Hern brought up the fact that it's in Roberts' rules. I'm familiar with Roberts' rules when I was at the State, State House as a state rep. And under Roberts' rules, I believe, I'm, I'm only thinking this is the way it went. Roberts' rules covers your conduct during a meeting. It does not cover your conduct when you're at home sitting on your couch. Do I agree with everything that all of these, all you counselors do when you're on Facebook? No, I don't. But I don't think censure is the word to use if Roberts' rules says that's conduct in a meeting. If Mr. Stone hammered on somebody in the audience, I can clearly see somebody saying we should censure him. But there's a First Amendment right and I think it's pretty well protected for everybody, including council members. Out on the street, what you say and what you do is you pay for at the polls. I'm okay with that. Unfortunately, when it comes to being at the polls, some of the half-truths and stuff that go flying around on the internet can destroy somebody's personality and also destroy their ability to get voted in when they do a good job when they're sitting in the nine seats up here. And as far as I'm concerned, most of you do a pretty good job, including John Stone, when you're sitting in these nine seats. Thank you.
Assistant Mayor Dameron?
Yeah, in, in an effort to bring this to a close and, and kind of wrap this up, people aren't going to be happy necessarily either way that we go. As has been pointed out, the ultimate decision is going to be made by voters in November at ballot box. That, that will be the ultimate censure. It'll be a deal or no deal, censure or no censure. And cast a vote accordingly for those people running for a position on the city council. I will confess that in my time on the city council, I've learned all sorts of new phrases. I didn't know until recently that there was a word like doxing. Now, I'm kind of old, but nonetheless. And as my granddaughter pointed out to me, when I see the initials LMAO, it doesn't mean Le Mau. It means something very different. Now, that's the way I would have pronounced it. So, we've got an awful lot to learn, all of us. I would propose that all of us sitting in these seats really work to exhibit the best possible judgment and the best possible character that the public has a right to expect of its elected representatives. And with that, I would call for the vote.
Okay.
Move the question.
Is there a second to move the question?
Can you have one more thing if that's okay?
Sure.
I don't think you can debate.
You want me to do something that was-
No, no.
No, okay. Wait a minute.
You have a second or not? I think there's a second to move.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Okay, Counselor, Assistant Mayor Dameron's made the motion and Counselor Sard seconded the motion.
It's a vote, I don't know.
I don't think you can debate that motion.
It's not a debatable motion, it's just a vote.
Okay. Roll call. And this roll call is to move the question.
We're all calling to move the question.
Yes.
Yep.
Counselor Sard?
I'm not sure when I'm voting, Lord.
Uh, this is to move the question.
To move them, okay, yes, yeah.
Counselor O'Hern?
Yes.
Counselor Stone?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Dameron?
Yes.
Counselor Zula?
Yes.
Counselor Keir?
Same.
Counselor Klosky?
Yes.
Counselor Pope?
Wanted to hear more of what she had to say. No.
Mayor Lovett? Yes. I'll say, okay, so we've moved the question to a vote. And the vote is Counselor Keir's vote to censor. And that was seconded by, I forgot who now. The second on the, oh, wait a minute, on the censure, hang on.
Counsel Klosky. Counsel Klosky.
Okay.
Would it be a point to, just make a point of order? Does Counselor Stone vote in this?
Yeah, he has to vote.
He has to vote. Okay.
So, your honor, this has, this is a show of hands unless the council wants a roll call.
I would say a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Okay, so we're ready for the motion, the vote on the motion? Yeah. Okay. Counselor O'Hern?
No.
Counselor Stone?
No.
Assistant Mayor Dameron?
No.
Counselor Zula?
No.
Counselor Keir?
Yes.
Counselor Klosky?
Yes.
Counselor Pope?
No.
Mayor Lovett? No.
Motion fails. Motion fails.
Excuse me?
The motion failed.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're going, yes.
I need to step away for just a minute. For some reason, my, both my parents have called me and it's not like, I don't want to step out for a second.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda-